Good evening, everybody. The time's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna formally open tonight's school committee meeting of March 29th, 2018. First order of business on the agenda are the minutes from our February 15th and March 1st meeting. Can I have a motion on February 15th, please?
We can all accept the minutes of February 15th.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded, um, do we have any discussion? I know I looked at them, they looked like the meeting that I remembered from a month and a half ago. Um, alright, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Motion passes, 3-0. Mary abstaining because she didn't attend the meeting. Thank you, Colleen. Um, next order of business, March 1 minutes. Again, looked at the minutes, looked like I remembered them. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to per minute.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Alright, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Motion passes 4-0, thank you. Um, chairperson's report. Relatively brief, but it feels like a very long time since we've sat in the same room together. Uh, so my timeline might be a little off, but I did wanna celebrate a couple of big things that have happened in the Maynard High School sphere recently. Um, most especially our athletic teams wrapping up the winter sports season. I wanna celebrate the, both the girls and the boys' basketball teams for their run through the state playoffs. Um, coming up slightly short, which is unfortunate, but again, um, just truly remarkable, especially for the girls' team celebrating their first section title like that. Um, so I do wanna celebrate that. Um, I also do wanna point out two of our actors in the audience tonight. Um, I attended the Sunday matinee show, um, I was blown away. The, the talent, the choreography, the intricacy, um, the hoisting, you know, like flying around on the stage, I, I was, I was really, really, really impressed and it was clear the amount of time and effort and energy that the entire cast and crew put into it, so kudos to both of you on that. Um, and that pretty much sums up my chairperson's report, so Dr. Girardi, what do you have for us tonight?
So I'd like to thank all three PPOs for holding a viewing of the documentary called Screenagers last night. Uh, it was well attended by parents and students, I'd also like to thank former school committee chair EB Gay for moderating as well. Um, several administrators have already seen it or plan to see it with their families, Central Office of Administration had an opportunity to view it as well, and it's also advertised on Netflix for folks who haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, I need to see it.
Um, many of us have experienced a lot of the concerns discussed in the video with our children, especially for some of us who have older children or had older children. Um, and there was a great bit, you know, there were a lot of great ideas for parents and for parenting to deal with this. Um, I remember my oldest wasn't quite there when iPhones were there, so we didn't have that problem with her, but my younger two, we, you know, we have these concerns, right? Um, and the ultimate message was it's not just a home or school problem, it's really a societal problem. So, uh, they did identify that schools should help manage student behavior through digital citizenship classes, one of the things that we do, um, and we're actually looking to ensure we want to, so I think that was good. Um, and in addition, I think there's a lot of good information there as the principals are gonna be reviewing their handbooks and the cellphone policy, so I think it was really beneficial movie. Next thing I wanted to share with the school committee was administrative regulation 651.1 requires the superintendent to approve all field trips over 75 miles.
Yep.
I've shared the paperwork with the school committee that the Maynard High School Amnesty International Group prepared, I approved the field trip, it's to the Great Hall at Cooper Union, New York, New York, uh, and it's for the Amnesty International Get on the Bus Campaign. The students reported, uh, in their write-up that last year's trip had a profound impact on their advocacy for human rights, First Amendment rights, and the ability to petition government. Um, and I know the school committee would be interested in learning about the important work that our students do through their clubs and how beneficial that is. I think we all agree that the more clubs, the more outside activities we can provide students, the more enriching it is to their education, and that's why we have so many special and wonderful students. Um, also, uh, students gathered on Wednesday, March 21st, in the gymnasium to rally in support of the students at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. The student body president Kyle Morgan read the names of the 17 people who lost their lives and then invited students to write letters to elected officials or to sign a banner that was, will be sent or was sent, um, to Douglas High School. Coincidentally, we have a retired teacher who now works down there, so we have a connection to that school.
Oh wow.
Uh, what I really liked is our beach beacon villager really covered it well, and they actually had a video of Kyle's speech, which was amazing. Um, I felt our students rose to occasion, they handled the entire event with dignity, respect, and seriousness that deserved, and it just, again, it's another statement of how wonderful our students are. Uh, lastly, between the Little Mermaid, the Winter Sports Awards Night, the International Week Dinner, Screenagers, and the regular sports practices and WAVM program, we had more than 2,000 people at Maynard High School in the evening.
Wow.
And it just goes to show that, uh, you know, even in the after hours, our schools are a valuable community resource, and it, and that was, you know, this was quite the week. We had a lot of really good things going on this week and a lot of things we should be proud of as a community, and that's my report.
Fantastic.
Can I ask your request?
Sure.
The students come back from this, or do we maybe have them come in and just?
That'd be great, I love it.
I would love it myself.
Okay.
Thanks, Mary. Hi ladies.
Hello.
Olivia, Sophia, evening, what do you have for us tonight?
Well, this is quite high today.
Okay.
We're very heightist here.
I know.
You'll have to pull that microphone down.
Every time, it's alright.
Everybody can talk to us.
I'm gonna miss it. Um, so first, we wanted to open up with, uh, as Mr. Girardi brought up, the international dinner, um, it was really fun, I wanted to do it, we got to do it for the first time last year, and then as a senior, you kinda get first dibs, so we had Italy, it was really fun, um, and just seeing how even some of the lower grades, like the sophomores, they were able to, some people brought full-on like riddles, like everything was being made, and there were so many people there, um, it was truly a great turnout, and you could tell, uh, Mr. Trudeau and Ms. Adams, all the teachers involved were, they were all there too, helping out the kids, it was really fun, we got to take lots of pictures, things like that, it was just nice to see, even kids from Fowler I saw were there, um, who don't even have older siblings in the high school, they were just taking part, which was really nice, 'cause it's something they'll hopefully be able to do when they're in the high school too, so I just loved doing that as well. Yeah, there were so many there, and we had the pasta at Italy, so they were like, they didn't know what any of the stuff was, and they, we were the last table, they were like, "I'll take some pasta," so they had like three entrees left, and we just like threw as much pasta as we could on their plate.
And like carrots?
Oh yeah. No, yeah, there was a little traffic jam in between, but our cannolis went fast, the pasta was a big hit, so. And also, I think I've mentioned this briefly a few times, but wanna invite you guys all to our National Honor Society World Hunger Dinner. Um, you guys helped us tremendously when we were advertising our food drive, and I'd really appreciate it if you guys could help us out with this food, um, hunger dinner as well. It's on April 12th, and it's gonna be held from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Maynard Cafeteria, High School Cafeteria, um, and I think it'll be a really eye-opening, impactful event, and so I'm really hopeful that it'll be a successful turnout. Um, and also, we wanted to both, this is kinda going back, but we wanna express our gratitude for allowing us to have that rehearsal that day.
We all kinda collaborated on Google Docs, we were like, "We wanna really get the message out there that we can't," um, I mean, the snow, it was, it was definitely nasty earlier on in the day, but we weren't going in until 4:00, so we thought it was really nice of you guys to let us in and be able to practice, so it could be good for you guys to come and see, so we were really grateful for that.
Sure, awesome.
Thank you for that.
With all the Heely work, you know, everything on the stage, clearly.
I know, I was so upset I didn't get to wear Heelys, but. I was not much of a pro, but it was okay. Um, and that's pretty much it.
Well, I, I shout out to the DPW, because it was, they were the ones who made it possible.
Yeah.
I had to check with them to make sure that they could get clear and safe for you, and they were, they worked.
I know, and, and Tony and all the other janitors at the high school, they were really great as well, they hung out until, whenever we finished up every time, just to make sure everything was nice and safe and clean for us, so we're really grateful for having them there as well.
Fantastic, thank you.
So yeah. Thanks guys.
Do you have any World Hunger?
Yep.
Is that for like any age?
Yep, any age, the whole community, anyone?
If, if we want extra information, is there something posted on the website?
It's going out on the blog.
It's going on the blog, um, you can email me, yeah, I'm hopefully gonna get it in the principal newsletter, yeah.
You can send me any information I can about these folks.
Sure, that'd be awesome, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks Olivia, thanks Sophia. Citizens comments. I have to say, it's been a long time since there's been this many people in the room like this, so welcome everyone.
Hello, I don't think, this is just for recording purposes, right Madeline? She's a WAVM girl. Um, okay, so I'm Garvey.
I'm Madeline.
And I think this is the right time to do this, so, um, we're here on not only behalf of Mr. Jones, Steve Jones, who couldn't be here tonight, but I think all of Maynard Soccer, so, um, Mr. Jones wanted us to come, and we wanted to come to, uh, to speak about the,
Fowler Fields.
The conditions of the Fowler Fields. We, um, and Mr. Jones, obviously, and probably the rest of the coaching staff believe that there's more money and more effort that can be put in to the fields and the back Fowler. I know if you sign up to be, um, a part of the Maynard Soccer Program, you are guaranteed to spend hours and hours and hours back there playing on what we like to call a soccer field, but it's like playing on a glorified baseball diamond.
Um, obviously, I've been playing there my whole life, because I've played soccer in Maynard, as long as I've been here, um, however, it does present some challenges when you're trying to really advance as a team. Um, I know for the past years, we've had, um, some serious downfalls when it, there's a lot of rain, um, the whole field turns into a mud puddle, you can't really practice there, trying to dribble the ball in general is an issue with all the rocks and, um, the little hills in the middle of the field, um, a lot of times, it's just, it looks like it hasn't even been taken care of. So, as Maynard Soccer becomes more popular, and a lot of people are starting to come here because of the new high school, it'd be really beneficial to the community and the soccer program itself to kind of have a better place to practice, especially when we're going against teams that are practicing on turf fields and fields that are cared for a little more, because we're kind of practicing on dead grass, dirt, and rocks, and that's not really what we should be doing, and it also creates, um, problems when it comes to injuries, that you're a lot more injury prone when you're practicing on fields that, um, aren't really cared for.
Yeah, what happens is you'll practice, um, three days out of the week, and you'll have two games, right? So you're practicing on what's equivalent to like a cement floor that's kinda covered with greenery a little bit, mostly dust though, and then you'll go to play your two gra, uh, two games, and what ends up happening is you're playing in real grass, so that's about one to two inches of friction that you're adding to the game. So what we found a lot this year, especially playing against, um, better teams and moving up in a league, is that when you add that layer of friction, you actually have to play a totally different mental and physical game, which was a hard transition. So you want your practice field to be reflective of the field that you're actually playing games on. And also, I just kinda wanted to speak generally about how great the Maynard Soccer Program is. Me and Madeline have been a part of it since we were in kindergarten, so it's a little sad talking about it, I haven't thought about this in a while, sorry. Um, but we've spent sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, every fall, Monday through Sunday, some of the times, oh geez.
Yes, Sundays we.
On that backfield practicing, and I really believe strongly that the Maynard Soccer Program is one that we should be proud of and one that we should put in time and effort into, so I just think that our field should reflect, um, the greatness of our program too, so that's just kinda what we came here to speak about.
Yep, thank you.
Um, sorry, thanks guys. Um, while I have the floor, I'm gonna do a little bit of a shameless promotion here. I also have a senior project, it is, um, a glow-in-the-dark themed walk-a-thon, it's April 27th at Alumni Field, it's 7:00 to 10:00 PM, and what I'm basically doing is, I'm trying to reach out to all towns that are surrounding Maynard, and you're gonna basically have the opportunity to come and walk as many laps as you can for the high school of your choice. So, say my good friend Olivia isn't actually go to Maynard, she goes to Neshoba. She would hear about the event and she'd be able to come. So Olivia's gonna come and she's gonna gather up as many friends, family members that she has, and she's gonna try as, walk as many laps as she can to support Neshoba. At the end of the night, whoever's town accumulates the most laps is gonna receive 60% of the money, the second place town gets 20%, and whatever's left after that is, um, donated to the Concussion Legacy Foundation. So April 27th, 7:00 to 10:00 PM, glow-in-the-dark theme, thank you.
Thank you ladies. Anything else from the citizenship team?
Yeah, since I came all the way in shorts. Um, yeah, I just wanna echo what the girl said, uh, actually, I don't think I could be as eloquent as those two girls were, they were really good, good job. Um, actually, I see former president of Maynard Soccer here, um, lots of Maynard Soccer players here, parents, all these concerned people, uh, Mrs. Fitz in the back, who's had lots of kids through the program, and the current president of Maynard Soccer. I represent, uh, Maynard Soccer, I represent the Friends of Maynard Soccer who've been raising funds for this for about two years, of which Steve Jones and Jim Hines and a few others are, are members of, and also I'm on the Maynard Recreation Commission, who, and Steve Jones and Jim Hines are also on that. And, um, I wanna thank Justin, Justin's been helping us out, he's represented the, uh, the school committee at our meetings, and I think it's representative of the, uh, kind of coalition of people that we've gotten together over the last two years to try and move this project forward, and I think that's really what it takes in a small town with competing priorities, you need everybody pulling together, and, um, Mary shaking her head, 'cause I know we, we helped work on the high school together.
We've all been there.
So, um, really my pitch is that, you know, the, um, the CPC has shown a commitment to this, the, um, the citizens of Maynard have shown a commitment to this, uh, we've raised $10,000, uh, from direct contributions from people in Maynard. Uh, the town itself has, has laid out a budget item for this, and I think there's a strong feeling, um, you know, you've shown us the support so far, so we'd like to see some money on the table if possible. Now, I know you have competing priorities, and it's kids and education are always first, but I think any token that you could give us towards this project would actually be very valuable, because we're very close to where we need to be to not only get the field kind of graded and some, some, um, loan put down, but also irrigation, and that's the full, complete picture. If we got there, then I think we'd have something for 10 years and not just a year or two, so, so please consider this, I know that you've been supportive, and I'd just like to see you continue that, thank you.
Yeah, um, so I'm gonna do something here, but I wanna make sure that we have everybody in the room who wants to have their voice heard, heard before I move on from citizens comments. As a teacher, I'm taught to use wait time, so. Alright, let's move on. So, um, what I'm gonna ask is, coming on the heels of Barry and Garvey, Madeline coming up to the mic, um, I'm gonna suggest that we take the agenda items slightly out of order, and I'm gonna flip-flop number six and number seven. So if you're here for the Leading the Nation videos, bear with us for about five or 10 minutes, please, um, 'cause I do wanna keep the momentum of the conversation going and start the conversation about Friends of Maynard Soccer. Um, so a couple weeks ago, we won in front of the BOS, um, for our own agenda item, but we were lucky enough to be on the agenda right behind Jim and Barry and the Friends of Maynard Soccer group, who did a very, very, very comprehensive presentation to the Board of Selectment. Um, so I'm not gonna belittle all of the details, because I think at this point, we, we know the scope of the project, we've talked about it extensively, I've given you periodic updates, um, as I've been attending their meetings, um, with both the design firm and Erin McClosco, who's sort of chaperoning the project from the town side. So, um, Barry hit the nail on the head, CPC, town, everybody's behind it, we sent a letter of support in, but we are very, very, very close to having the potential for a very top-notch facility, um, to be built behind the building here, so, um, I would like to entertain a conversation of, um, contributing financially to support the project, and at that point, I just wanna open it up to, to hear opinions from the membership.
Yeah, I just, uh, I'd like to add that, uh, I was at that meeting too, they did a really nice job, and I'm a firm believer, if you gotta do something, do it well, right? So if we can contribute and help them to have an irrigation system and a really good field, it's right to do it really well, so I would be in support of that. And while there are competing interests, we're fortunate that we still have a little bit of money left in our international fund, so I think Michelle verified at one of our meetings, there is some, and you talked about, you know, possible numbers, but, uh, you know, that's money for one-time costs, it's not part of our, our regular budget, so that's where you would take money to try and help them out, so let's, I do think if they're that close, that we could help them have irrigation and have a field that will maintain itself, because the irrigation just makes it grow really nice.
It's a huge piece of the puzzle.
I would be an advocate for it.
Michelle, what is the balance of the international?
Like ballpark, not, not exactly, but ballpark?
I thought it was 75.
Yeah.
So this is the account that was once quite substantial, when we actually had international students coming in and paying tuition, but over the years, we paid it down, and paid it down for a one-time oper, one-time capital.
Yeah, have, we haven't had any students.
This, no.
So it hasn't been repulsed, yeah, it hasn't been repulsed itself, it's dwindled, but if there is a cause, this is, this seems like a good cause.
And I forget what the shortfall was, are we being asked to, to fill the shortfall, or?
I mean, ballpark number-wise, because, you know, there's still contributions that are coming into the, to the nonprofit, um, or to the charitable organization, but we're, we're within $25,000 or $30,000. Um, and I think if, if we can get that number, um, approved, and, you know, we can, we can put conditions on it, you know, pursuant to passing a town meeting, and, you know, we can, we can put conditions on, because CPC and other groups that are also involved in this project have put conditions on theirs as well, so I think it's only right that if conditions exist, we can add our own conditions. Um, but all things being equal, 25, 30 gets us to the finish line, we go out to bid and hopefully maybe even start construction in the fall.
I do know, I think that it incorporated 20% contingency or something, so if we could put something in there to say that everybody gets their proportion of cheer back if that 20% contingency doesn't. Exactly, exactly, 'cause I think with every project, you have to have a certain amount of contingency, just for the surprise as well. I, I know last, last time we talked about it here, we had said, I think the number we threw around was 25,000.
Yeah.
But if, I, I would advocate, like if the third helps to get to the number needed for irrigation, that I would, I would give a motion to give 30,000.
I'm, I'm gonna turn to members in the crowd tonight, Barry, Steve, would that number get us close to where we need to be?
Yeah, if I was to choose between 25 and 30.
As always, I appreciate your honesty, Barry. Excellent.
Are there particular, other potential places, things that that would go towards?
So part of the plan of those funds was to be able to set, um, and use it for our students when they're going on trips, and then for students when they come here.
Yeah.
So those are the plans, I think with all this and the playground, um, with the, at least with the playground, and I would assume with this, with this soccer field, the committee felt as though that this was a benefit to the community by any of the students who were coming here, both as well, potentially driving.
Yeah.
And so I think, I think if it's in line, certainly with, with those pieces, the other thing is that we have working with some of our committees to try and increase students coming, um, so we're trying to do some more promotional pieces at the beginning.
And having a prime facility does help with that marketing.
Certainly.
I, it is very, yeah, this is, I mean, I look at you all, and this is so clearly, like I look and be like, "Guys, we're writing that check, and just get it done," right? So, um, it's just the, the one thing that had occurred to me, but I feel like this really addresses it, and I just wanna speak it out loud so everyone can understand kind of the process and the budget of things, is that we are just looking at 375,000, operational budget shortfall, so far, and now this year, which is, uh, 2. something million since 2013, from level service, which means services that we're providing just to continue doing exactly what we were doing in 2013, which is about 2.1 million less than that right now. So with that in mind, it's, it is tricky to find ways that we can do these kinds of things, but that, that piece of money and, and understand, and the, the understanding of that, and, and realizing and understanding like that will really such a benefit all around, it just really, um, seems like it would be a good use in a place, and we'll still have some left in that account.
Yeah, and I don't, we would not advocate for using those funds to.
Yeah, there's no way it's just for our resources.
Right, and the reason you do that is, is like what happened this year, is we had no idea if the funds were gonna continue, so you're, you can't count on that money to go towards anything that you need to count on every year, so that's the reason why that money stays aside for things that are one-time thing, um, so just to mention that for anyone that's, that's kind of the difference between that, and it's all, it's funny how these pots of money work and way of, but, but that's, you really don't wanna count on, you think you're gonna be able to fund a teacher for the next five years, or forever, from this pot, and then, like this year, we had nothing going into it.
Two years in a row.
Two years in a row, we had nothing going into it.
I just wanna say too, I know what we originally talked about, but my concern was, obviously, the financial of who was going to maintain the fields or whatever, I actually watched all of the doors, I mean, and I appreciate the amount of work that you guys put into, even the, the way you spoke of getting traditional funds to make sure that we're really human for the future, um, and I think it's solely along the cost of, 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 that, that was a little bit of an error, I think, I mean, so our, our ones that I watched, I thought, it was, it was really great, Michelle, and she, her, 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 kind of, funding to, 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 we spent on, you know, two years of the whole was already taken down, so I'm so glad to hear that irrigation has been important to us.
Absolutely.
So I think progress, spending money to allow to it, right?
I'll entertain a motion.
I say motion to take thirty thousand dollars from the, the, for the exchange grant, you know, to, uh, to give to President Mator Socker for the contingency that if we don't, um, if they're not used proportionally, it will be, that, that, a percentage of the portion we're giving, we return to us.
Catch all that coming?
Is that too tricky?
No, I think it made sense to me. Um, motion's been made. I will second the motion. Um, any further discussion? Here, no discussion, call for a vote, all in fair. Motion passes, four zero. Thank you. Not, not used to that. All right. Maynard High School, leading the nation.
So I'd like to introduce our amazing, uh, W A V M program, uh, teacher, Mr. Ogden, and his, he'll talk about his students and, and talk about the leading the nation campaign. A brief introduction though, that's a campaign that we're working with, with, uh, the Massachusetts Department of Education. Um, they're very proud of the fact that Massachusetts has scored number one on international tests and that we're an amazing state. We're very proud of the fact that Massachusetts, that Maynard, has a lot of things to be very proud of and our students actually participated in one of their video competitions and did very well. So I'm gonna let Mr. Ogden take it over from here and explain it and show some wonderful videos and, and explain what we're gonna do to celebrate too, right?
Yes.
Awesome.
All right. So first off, I'd like to thank everyone for having me. Um, as Dr. Girardi told you, I teach television and radio, which has sort of evolved into communications in its second year at the high school. Um, I just wanna give you a little background with what we've done in the little over one and a half years we've been doing this. Um, this past Saturday, I accompanied a student, Jennifer Miller, to the Salem Film Festival, where she took sixth place out of a hundred and sixty-three entries for a short film she made. Um, today I accompanied two students, Madeline Batasso and Emma Jacques, um, for their entries in an anti-burn where they won top honors in the state. This is the second year in a row that we have won this honor. Um, right now, we have a student, Maeve McCarthy, who is competing at a national level for the anti-drug PSA. Um, it is the second year in a row that we competed at the national level, meaning last year we won Massachusetts. We did not win at the national, try again this year. Um, last year, we were featured on Channel Five News. Our own principal, Kara Janis, was on that. We featured our news department and our foreign exchange student. Um, we have entered the M I A A sportsmanship videos at Gillette Stadium. Olivia Masaro, who's in the audience, uh, she took top honors last year and this year we actually took second place and we took three of the seven top spots from Maynard for different student groups. Um, with the help of the M E F, we have developed our photography program over there. Last year, we, um, submitted about five to ten entries in the, um, Student Emmy Awards, which is basically the amateur Emmy awards that you see on television. Uh, we had two students, Jaden Meyer, did he come tonight? He didn't show up. He is in the class, but last year he, um, was nominated along with Tyler Sedeno. Uh, and this year, once again, because of a generous grant from the M E F, we were able to enter twenty entries, um, because every entry costs ten dollars. So that will be coming next week and we're hoping to get a lot of good news from that. Uh, we have two students, Charlie and Jaden. Can you guys stand up for a moment?
Justin.
I mean, Justin, sorry. Uh, Charlie and Justin, uh, along with, um, two other students who made a, an unboxing video where they opened up a new Macintosh computer that the school purchased for us. Um, some top executives, uh, Justin was editing, Charlie was one of the announcers. Thank you very much, you guys. Some top executives at Apple saw this video and they donated five thousand dollars worth of professional editing software. And that was just wonderful. So thank you guys very much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep going. Um, we've, we've received, we've received a new, uh, very large green screen, courtesy of a grant from the P T O. Um, we've developed and started a weekly news podcast, which we call M, M H N, which we've done almost fifty episodes. And every week, we try to highlight basically everything that's going on in the school. We talk about stuff going on in the cafeteria. We talk about stuff going on in field trips. We talk about, um, leading the nation. We've talked about so many different things.
E L L.
Yep, E L L. The students have fun segments that they've developed, that they've produced and created. Um, and that is continuing. Um, this year in our advanced communications class, which my class is here, we have created George Washington documentaries with the history department and we're currently making American Dream documentaries with the English department. So we've had some really great collaboration. Um, I had a parent come up to me after the, um, play on Saturday. Uh, he was Mr. Batasso and he told me, I just went to Quinnipiac with my daughter and we looked at the communications program because she's now really interested in doing that. He said, when you told us at parent-teacher conferences that these students were operating at a college level, I didn't quite believe you. But then when I saw what they were showing us at Quinnipiac, he said, I actually think what you're doing here is better than some college levels. And I do believe that the students have done such a great job. Um, we are making continued progress on chapter seventy-four, um, which is working on a vocational program where we hope to be able to give these young people a, a certificate to go into the world and be ahead of everyone else. And I do believe that in ten years, we will see some very successful young people in this industry coming out of Maynard. Um, thanks to the leadership of Dr. Girardi, Principal Kara Janis, Jennifer Goddett, they've really put a lot of support behind this program. And that's why it has been able to just flourish and thrive so quickly. Um, so I just wanted to say, I think that there are times when a town is known for something. You might say, oh, I know that town, they have a great hockey program or, um, they always put on a great play. I, I do believe that the communications program in W A V M at the high school can be that thing that people say, where's Maynard? Oh, isn't it that small town with that great communications program that you guys have going? You have people going to all different areas of communications, into photography, into web design, into television, into radio, into film. And that's what we're really working to get these kids into. So the, um, the latest thing was the leading the nation. Um, today, we're gonna show you four different videos that our students made. Um, because of these four videos, the entire class has been invited to the State House next week as guests of honor.
And Iowa pizza party still.
Yes. And they will be getting a pizza party as well. Um, when I was driving here, I was really hoping that a few of the students would show up. I, I was hoping, like, I, I hope a few of them show up because I really want them to talk about this after you see this. And when I came in, I saw pretty much the whole class here, which is a testament to our students in this community as a whole. Um, so thank you to you guys. And after we watch these, I'm gonna have you come up here and talk a little bit about the whole process of this and what goes into it. So what I hope you see from these videos, um, you're gonna see an abundance of different strategies, tactics, uh, of education. You're gonna see photography, you're gonna see camera work, you're gonna hear script, you're gonna hear voiceovers, you're gonna see, um, interviewing techniques, editing skills, you're gonna see graphics. And it is an amazing, amazing, um, medium that these kids are doing and learning and they're making it look easy, but it's not easy. So, uh, do we wanna keep the lights on?
Our school is able to break the community together by winning state titles and championships.
The main teams give back to the community through yard cleanups, clinics to help younger athletes, and our involvement in the Boys and Girls Club program.
The high level that our sport assumes put into the community is not the only unique thing about us. At Maynard, we have our own broadcasting station, our W A V M. Through this program, our students have helped to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars for people in need for over forty years.
This high school station provides our local community with all types of programming that keeps the entire town connected.
It has aided many careers of alumni coming from M H S. It allows students to diversify themselves and create a more successful future. Beta High School's devotion to the community, sports, and academics proves that it's a perfect example of how we are hoping to lead the nation.
This next video is by two students, Long McHale and Shablon Prince.
Every year since nineteen seventy-nine, students at Maynard High School have organized the annual Beacon Santa Telethon through the W A V M students. Through this daunting ordeal, students raised the money forty thousand dollars in two thousand seventeen and amassed over one million dollars for the less fortunate during the holiday season. This forty-hour marathon of television programming showcases local acts, businesses, bands, auctioneers, and students' talent. To create this forty-hour productions, students book apps, solicit donations, write scripts, run a studio, offering cameras, generating graphics, and much more. By helping the communities around them and creating top-quality television production from the W A V M studio and broadcasting live radio shows at Maynard High School, these are just some of the ways Maynard students are helping Massachusetts to lead the nation.
This is Olivia, Katie, and Max.
Maynard is a town with roughly ten thousand residents. Though it's one of the smallest towns in Massachusetts, it's a tightly packed community that strives. W A V M is one of Maynard's cornerstones. W A V M is a unique program that gives students endless opportunities. Dona De Young is a student-run, teaching and radio station that runs through the high school. Maynard is also proficient in music and the arts. Their endless ensemble groups and the students passionate about music. The Maynard Boys Basketball Team won the state championship last year. Maynard wins most sport seasons, but also prioritizes academics above all. Academics are a huge deal at Maynard High School and the teachers instill responsibility and knowledge into the students so they can also have great futures.
We have Harrison, Charlie, and Justin.
We are the music makers and we are the dreamers of dreams. Maynard High School is helping Massachusetts lead the nation in education by providing students with unique opportunities through various programs such as W A V M and also by providing students with unique programs through radio.
So Mr. Ogden.
Yes.
What do you think makes the W A V M exceptional program at Maynard High School?
W A V M is an exceptional program because it gives students the opportunity to be immersed in a television and radio program like none other, that is one of the best in Massachusetts, as you can see from the awards behind me, and is striving to be one of the best in the nation.
I think Maynard's leading the nation due to a top-notch teaching staff, some really unique programs such as our W A V M radio and TV program. For these reasons and others, we really are leading the nation.
So what I'm hoping is you can see the tremendous promotion that these students are giving to, um, the education system in Maynard and also to the town of Maynard. And so what I'd like to do is invite them up here and I'd like for you to ask them some questions. Ask them what they're learning, ask them what it takes to do this, ask them whatever you wanna ask them. So come on up, you guys, make a, a line. So why don't we go down the line?
So what skills, I've, I've been at some of the alumni banquets and I've, I've heard some of the past graduates talk about the skills they feel they're gaining that are gonna help them in their future. What skills can you think of that you gain from being part of this program?
Patience, a lot of patience. Something doesn't work, you usually know how to fix it, like that. YouTube's also your best friend in helping troubleshoot most situations as well.
Yeah, that's true.
I think like usually when someone is fond of communications, like most of us are, it's just like, when you, like when I was here, I liked, I liked taking pictures, but I didn't know how the dynamics of it actually worked until I got into communications. And I had taken, it was my second year of communication, and so it's, it's nice, it, going into the future, I mean, it's nice to know, like, you know how things work, like, you know how to make something, like, better and improper, you know, like when I'm out and I'm, and I wanna take a picture and like I'm not just randomly taking a picture, I'm knowing the structure of how to do it and the dynamics of finding, like ratios, like there's like, well, like the golden ratio, it's like, you need to know specific, you know.
Yeah, I noticed there was a picture of the basketball team, but it seemed like it was a, a whole take picture, but the ball was orange and their letter, like you, you obviously did a lot to make that picture look special to move in. It was really cool. I did see a lot of those techniques that Mr. Ogden was talking about.
And it's nice to like, uh, to know how to edit certain things and it also, in like my opinion, it helps a lot with personal, like confrontation because you are interviewing a lot of people, you are filming them, and you're on camera yourself, so you have to be comfortable with who you are and like, I think that also helps.
Awesome. What's one of the most challenging things you've run into as part of the communications program here?
Wi-Fi connection.
Yeah.
Uh, I think one of the biggest things is, uh, editing. It's almost time-consuming things. I know me and Justin work on Hype City together and some of the episodes, like I know one specifically was a long episode, took us like almost two weeks to edit. There's a lot of like After Effects, special effects we're adding into it to make it really good. It takes a long time and it's really hard to learn. We had to look up a lot of YouTube videos to learn how to do it, but in the end it came out really good.
I think timing also is like a big struggle because we are a fifty-minute class, so we are, we make videos within a week that usually professionally would be done within like three to four months. Like they take a long time and we do the best we can with that time. So I think managing our time from a project being two weeks is kinda difficult, but obviously a little.
Yeah, sometimes, like you'll be working on a, a piece and you'll be editing it and you'll get so like lost in what you're trying to do that like the bell rings and all of a sudden you're like, oh my God, I have next class and like you almost forget what you're doing because you're so like lost in the camera work. I can say that before this class, I actually had never taken a communications class before. Uh, it was really the only class that fit into my schedule this year. So when I came in, Ogden said, uh, you're gonna be able to keep up? And I said, is there really that much to keep up with?
Surprise.
But it's a great struggle and it's been a really good experience and it's, if you ever have a future job where they need help with a website or anything like that, it's another unique apply application that you know how to do that stuff and you can help with that.
I had to say, videos are kind of, everyone goes to videos now, so you don't, you wanna know how to do something, you find it on YouTube. You, you trust that an organization I work with was just thinking of fundraising and looked at, we need a video in order to help people understand what, so it's definitely, no matter what you go into, I think that's, yeah, it's gonna end up, this is some form of communication is distinctly gonna help.
It's always like a developing industry, especially like for me, marketing's like my whole career in college. And so with having like a communication background, especially in high school, knowing that I have one step ahead of most kids that are already in the college I'm going to, it's just like, you have that, it gives like you have that extra skill, that much application, which makes you more desirable and helps and helps. And like, it's nice to know what you're doing and like you can introduce it to other people. Now, everybody gets to do it, but I know they start with, it's very true.
Also a testament to the communications program, I've taken almost every class that , uh, the communications department has to offer. And since ninth grade, we had math teachers teaching the, uh, videography classes and you can see in the past two years, like the change that we went through with everything being improved, more students being involved. And like what Mr. Ogden, the, uh, time and commitment that he's put into the program, it's really shown.
Not to name drop here, but Justin, I receive as a day of the M. But just having classes at Maynard is truly, I'm trying to improve, definitely helps solid higher decisions to go into this as a field in the future. It also is also reassuring to know that like we have like other students on like knowing how to use all the equipment and probably we got in some of the other students, which is definitely something to look forward to.
Um, I wonder, I appreciated the remark about patience. I wondered if through studying communications, is there anything you've learned about yourself through studying communications that has surprised you?
I still wonder after that because I used my mouth, but that was gonna be mine. And I responded to what I said. No, that's good. So, um, we before, honestly before I took, I just called originally, I was digital design last year and I took digital design communications two this year. And like before I took this class, I wasn't too comfortable with conversation or people. Like I wasn't too comfortable like making eye contact or sitting down and like talking to someone, or, or, and I feel like I was probably screenagers, they talk about that and that I'm learning. But now, another part of being so attached to this like advanced social media is that we, especially with filming, you're on camera, like you discover like you can be like up or weird, um, in front of the camera and be able to talk to people like not fidget or like, you know, it's just like easier for, that's what I discovered is like, uh, how I like talking to people, like conversation, I like dealing with the problem of face-to-face behind the, the, the ice cream.
Also, um, like Mr. Ogden said, we have done two projects with other classes, the history and the English department. And, um, they, at least the history department was a class of freshmen, so they didn't, they haven't taken these kinds of classes and they don't really know how to work, um, the computer in the head and get the right camera shot, the right angle, stuff like that. So you have to be able to work with younger kids and older kids as we, everything with the image department and apply your knowledge and help them with your knowledge that you have and it kind of brings another side to you, like almost like a leadership role.
It's one thing to know how to do something, it's a completely different set of skills to teach somebody else how to do it. That's really.
It's one of the privileges of that, it's like not only are we being taught, but we're being taught how to teach.
Yes. And when, uh, you were talking about patience, in the beginning of, uh, Charlie Harrison and I's video, when Charlie walks across the school, I think we spent around two hours in total dragging the screen to fit Charlie as he walked by. Like Katie and Olivia were in the same computer room as us. It took us three or four classes just to get that moved in.
That one shot.
And that's sometimes, like that was. And that's sometimes like that was like maybe two, what, two seconds?
Yeah.
So um, my question is, there are three women and six guys, is that representative of the vacations?
We actually have four, we have four in the class.
Five.
Seven guys.
Five. Four, five, four, five, yeah.
Five. And um, it's personally, it's like to me, we all were so well with each other.
No, no, my question was how will we encourage more women, well, to go into the communication?
In the other communications classes, there's a lot of other girls.
This is just because it's a different classroom and the schedules.
I actually think it's quite balanced.
Yeah, a lot of girls like you are, and you're a lot of much attractive, like the way it is, like you did, the special thing about it is like you can be with whoever and you can create something like really cool. No one, no one cares like, oh, you're a woman or a man, like you guys made the same amount of quality in the same video. And I think that's such a special about this class, like everyone's like equal, we all make equal projects and it's like.
Yeah, it's like when we watch them after we do a certain project and we watch all of our videos together in class. It's like, at least for me, you think about like your whole video the entire time you're making it. And then when you watch some of us, you're like, that's a completely different thought process. It's, it's really cool to see how they, wow, they did quite a totally different way with it, it turned out awesome.
To go back to, um, your question, I definitely think though, I definitely go from color, it's a little man in there for the first call, you know, CEOs last year. And also there's plenty more in W A D M.
And one comment, and I wish I could remember the student's name, Colleen will remember, um, that kid was, um, JP. He is one student of many who's at Communications Program, it's, you know, he's been pretty renowned for many years, but he is one student who his mom said that when he went on to college, people long waited that ability that he had and he just, you know, took over basically. So I see all of you guys doing the same thing in whatever field you go into, so congratulations.
I just want to say, is there anyone at dinner speak that would want to just say something? I'd love to hear from anyone that can say anything.
What's something that you feel like you need to share with us that we haven't heard yet?
I think it, uh, communications and all this cinematography gives us a bigger voice in our community. And you start to see that again with the walkouts and the never again movement. Uh, I do have a tendency to get political, but uh, it allows us to frankly have so much more of a say, not just in the community, but in society as a whole. And that empowerment will definitely help us later in life and like as voters and.
It's helping now, I mean, it is helping.
I think like going off of that, like this program's like one of the most influential programs like on state of the school. Because with, with M H N, like as many people, not, you don't say a lot of people tune into like a high school dispatch, but it's all, Mr. Ogden nails it out every day, like I can like watch it. And then the stuff that happened to begin at M H N, like all our programs that we have a big influence on how we approach ourselves and like how we can influence other people in a way. And so I think it's like, it's also like about like, we can get our voice out there without having to go with like too dramatic, like we can do it on our own.
So it is a responsibility, I guess, that you guys seem to be responsible for.
It's the only class I have where I get to do what I want with my videos and I don't have to sit in a chair and listen to a teacher talk all day long.
I think it's very culture group.
Yeah.
It's nice not to have to sit down all the time like Harrison says.
Well, self-directed.
Get out, yeah.
Like uh.
You get your own creative license.
Like Mr. Ogden said, like it isn't your typical class, like you want to be creative, express yourself, not just sit in the chair and read another story. You want to create your own story.
And that's such an important piece of it is that you guys are creating stories, you're learning how to tell stories, you're learning how to tell stories through video media, through spoken media, through visual media. You're going to have that power to, to use for whatever platform you choose to put that out there. You have power, this, these skills are giving you power. While it's not a class, when you're listening to a teacher talk, I certainly hope that we're hearing of all of the skills that they're learning that are going to make them the generation that, that will help us hopefully to heal and, and come together and do some amazing things. You know, I couldn't be more proud of being a part of this community and the work that you all have done. And your career is just absolutely amazing, so thank you for taking.
Yeah, thanks for taking your time. It's a perfect example of teacher as the coach or facilitator, student as the director of their knowledge, that is amazing. And the future looks quite bright to me and I have students who are so amazing like you. So it makes us feel good to know that you're doing good work.
Life is like that, you just kind of follow the wave and it's amazing what it'll do for you.
I do want to acknowledge too, um, you know, Mary, you mentioned that this, and several of you are involved in the after-school W A D M. Maynard has a very proud history of our communications program and nothing is going to be possible without the work that folks like Mr. Managen and the students who are at W A D M have done. The fact that that was a platform that we could build is amazing for our, it's just astounding. And I love the fact that what we're seeing is people who have found their passion and have been able to be involved for many, many years as an after-school are able to use that passion during the day. But we're also seeing folks who are you, and are coming in and learning some skills that again, whether this is the field of your career, is certainly going to be influential if you step ahead of, of, of your peers.
And one last kudos to Mr. Ogden and, and to you. Because we were sitting at phones calling businesses saying, can you help us with this chapter seven four? You know, we, we spent a couple of days together, we've been working on grant, this grant or the application. A lot of people are putting their heart into this because we believe in it, but you're showing us why we should believe in it. So, but thank, thanks to the educators that I work with. Thanks for sharing your Thursday night with us.
Um, it's a really great class, really good kids. Um, I think what you said about video is the new literature. Um, and what I love about that is that at its core, it's writing. Like you, everything that you saw there started with scripts. I love that we give the kids an opportunity to have a hands-on program where they can come in and build something. Um, and most importantly, I think it's a great program because it makes school fun. And when you can have fun at school, you're more engaged and you're, you want to go and you want to do well. So thank you all very much and thanks for your support.
Can I just say kudos to Mr. Ogden because being on the Ed Foundation, we've provided him with a couple of grants. But one of the things when we sat down at a workshop with him, the owner and myself, one of the things he said about coming to Maynard was that we are more encouraging about exploring different things. It's, you know, so he feels like he can help everybody grow, so I really appreciate that creativity too and your, your passion.
Thank you very much.
This chapter seventy-four application program, now we built it with a non-high school director. He has been a, a key, a key component of being able to take what we've done very well already and make it something that is state work and that can be able to certify, so he's working on it.
All right, back onto the business at hand. This is the boring part. Wow, thanks, thanks everybody for coming out. We're talking about policies and procedures if anybody wants to stick around for a while. Steve, you're sticking into the bitter end?
I know, I'm like enjoying it. Great, I'm, I'm just hanging around in case there's any money left over at the end.
Maybe some will fall out of the ceiling tiles, you never know. All right, agenda item number eight, Admin Regulation 530.1, which is our wellness. Bob? So I'd just like to point out that at the last school committee meeting, we had the first reading. Unfortunately, because of the snow days and the, the wellness committee couldn't get together to review some of the recommendations that were made. So I'd asked that we tabled this so we can get that information from them at the next, and then the next meeting we can review in the second meeting.
Yeah, they've scheduled it, rescheduled it.
Uh, yeah, I think they actually held this morning, I just didn't have the revised version for you. So I know that they've reviewed what, the recommendations that you made, but I know we sent it back to them and so I just asked you to table that one. Okay, easy breezy. School committee policy number eight, which is our adminis, admission policy for potential chapter seventy-four vocational technical education program.
Plays into the chapter six.
Right, the application, so, so Mrs. Godet actually worked with it, she did give you a copy and there's some choice points that we'd like you just to, to make a decision if you could tonight, because we do have to get this.
Do you need the sample, the sample part, like which is whether.
Are we talking about the blue font or?
Um, where it says, if you look on page, there are two choices.
On sample A, yes.
The first one is on the selection process. Um, in my read, there's sample A and sample B, so we pick one of those. There are fairly small changes between the two of them. I don't necessarily have preference for one over the other, you can sort of make two. Uh, and then the selection process is the other part that we do have to make a decision on. Um, and we do have, this will be a certain changes, I thought this, we do have preference for administrative purposes, uh, certainly with, you know, digital policy and for yield. Essentially for sample A, the lottery, we can use those, especially if the system is first gatehouse ground, that this makes the most sense to us. Uh, we do not believe that we will have, you know, waiting lists that are two or three times, uh, that what the program will allow. We have a component of this, I'm pretty sure, and is that this does not mean that only twenty students per year will be taking communications classes. This is just for students who are in the vocational, um, program pathway, uh, who will have first access if they go to vocational classes. But certainly that does not mean that any student who's not in the pathway will not have access, we will have plenty of vacancies. So that would be our preference. If you would like to go with the, um, part, the choice B, the selection criteria, our recommendation would be that we not use, this is state and what most vocational districts use, this is what they use. Because our program is unique in the sense that we have students who are participating in our communications program starting in sixth grade. And also because of some of those factors we'll use that both the students work with and I have regarding some of these selection components. Uh, we would suggest that we more heavily weigh participation in the W A D M as an after-school component and perhaps have some other, you know, recommendations or things of that nature. So, but again, our preference would be the lottery.
And then Jen, doing not a deep, but just a surface level read, it feels like for the admissions procedure, the application process, it looks like sample A has a little bit more fine detail to it.
I think that's fair.
And I, I think if, in my personal opinion, is I see this almost as a checklist that a student could use and I think the more specific in that case, the better. But that's just my opinion.
You're saying that about A?
Yes, correct. Just looking at it, you know, A says you have to obtain the course selection form, identify the program, have the check of the form signed, return the form. But then you look at sample B and it says obtain an application and return the completed application. You know, some of the nuance I think is missing there. I like things to be very spot out, that's just me, that's why I look at the sheets to cover.
Can I just ask you a, just a question? So if a student works at, enters a program, I understand, great, you're hooked, and then they go through, what is the process? Does that slot get filled like mid-year or can somebody else walk right in, you know, based on the fact that they've been doing it before or they go into the next year?
So most of these, most schools that at least have multiple programs. And so what this is used for, which is the withdrawal process or transfer process, is used when you have multiple programs and you have a student who leaves a highly competitive shop program to go onto a different one and they have a wait list. So it's called, there are some incredibly popular, if I withdraw, Michelle can come in because she's been waiting for that. So in theory, yes, that's what would happen. In practice for us, it would depend on what we're doing. Um, and again, part of this is trying to fit, to some degree, as we're paying into our rental, uh, the vocational frameworks are really designed for true vocational schools, not necessarily vocational programs within our premises. So some, so yes, in theory, that's what would happen. For our purposes, that they don't go to a degree, but that's going to happen and all that.
We can review it, I think, either the first year.
Absolutely, so just because we adopt a policy, you know, we could adopt a policy with a lottery basis and then after the first year, we realize we have three times as many applicants, um, as, as seats to go into it. And so then we can, we can make the change of those, absolutely.
I think it makes sense, I, I am swayed by your, the fact that you would principal care, Janice, like sample A for the lottery, that there's a preference for that? So I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, I would advocate for that and then you would seem to have strong preferences for the first part. And I, I, there's not, I don't see huge differences between.
No, I think substantively, yes, that they're pretty similar.
So we just need you to make a decision, because we do want to get this as the final.
So I, I will make a motion, motion to pass policy, um, number eight, using the language we have right now in sample A for both the application process and also for using sample A for the selection process.
I'll second. Motion's being made in second, any further discussion? All in fair? All right, um, school committee policy number ten. So the last two were second readings, the rest of these were all first readings because a lot has come on our plate very quickly. So this policy is the procurement procedures for child addition program. Which we were told we have to have, right? Right, Maynard Public, so Michelle really worked intimately on this one, but Maynard Public Schools had the D E S E procurement review in early March. As a result of this review, we are required to establish this procurement policy and not use the talents policy. In the past, we were under the impression, we could, we were under the impression we could use the talents policy. After this review, they said, no, you have to have your own. So, um, this is the D E S E recommended language that Michelle worked on with, with Colleen. And so we would ask at the first reading just to review it and then we can bring it back to the next meeting for final approval. Any discussion or commentary this morning?
Just one client, it's like one more draft from Michelle, I don't know, business manager, one more draft.
I see how yours appears printed. I, I just have, when I'm looking at it on Google Drive, the formatting seems weird, but it's just.
And this is timely now because we're also wanting to be a part for.
So we actually, our, our, today is release day.
Okay.
Today is the release day of the R F P.
Sweet.
And that this, so in our procurement review, we had to make sure that we got this done, um, so that once the R F P comes back and they, they come back and may for the administrative review, um, that we have this policy in place, both the copy of R R.
Fantastic.
The formatting just seems like, like just looking at it, and I don't know if it's a Drive problem or if it's, if it's because we took a Word document. But if you look at page, does yours, Colleen, show up on page, the first page? Under procurement code of conduct and number one, it just looks like part of the, you see that there's one line that says in the Word, it's just small things like that. That's not even included, it's just one line.
Having dug into it so deeply, Michelle, and knowing that the language is coming from Desi, are you pretty comfortable with the procedure?
Yeah, it's, they actually send it to you and they, their recommendation is replace where it says schooling.
Sure, okay.
Pretty much.
So there really wasn't a whole lot of Maynard specific?
No, it is, there's not, because this, this follows the lines, if chapter thirty B, which is what we go through, like Aaron does at the town for all of our procurement, it's what we do for our food service or whatever. This is an extension of that in the sense of the Department of Nutrition or, uh, it will be, um, wants us to have a procurement policy specifically for child nutrition. So this is what they recommend.
Okay.
That's very helpful. I do have one, uh, there's a numbering thing?
Yeah, this is P D F, you know, uh, David just.
Say, let's look at all that.
Drive does my thing. Yes, it does, depending on the size of the screen. And it's just a first read, so.
Right, right.
So you can always make recommendations and get them back to Colleen, we know.
So you can always make recommendations and get them back to Colleen, we know.
Right. But I think it makes a lot of sense if this is the primary language.
Okay.
Okay.
Then let's move on. Policy five twenty-six, home hospital instruction. This is a new policy.
It is, and again, it's a first reading, and through our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Consolidated Program Review Process, the home and hospital instruction policy must be approved, they require that. So that was one of their findings that we had to do. So Carol and Colleen reviewed the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' model policy and adapted that for Maynard. This, and so this is a first reading, again, if there's anything that you feel we need to tweak, then we can, you know, we can consider that.
It looks sort of short and sweet.
No, it's short and sweet. It's super straightforward.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, it's direct, you know, there needs to be a written order from a physician. It goes through Carol. Couldn't be any more straightforward. Okay. Very. First reading, any other comments or questions on that one? All right. Okay, this one's a little beefier. Policy number nineteen.
Yeah, this is, I was curious with this one, Bob, because.
Actually, I think we jumped over five fifty.
Did I speak down this one?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, oh, sorry, let's go back to five fifty, the code of conduct.
So if you want, I'll introduce it, I know you're in the policy subcommittee with it. So, you know, the policy subcommittee was really looking at code of conduct and discipline. And we had this policy, policy number five fifty in place, however, what we realized was that this, even though it was listed as discipline, it's really a code of conduct policy, because it talks about our expectations. And so, you know, pretty basically, we felt like if we just changed that to the code of conduct policy, and then brought in a new discipline policy, then we'd be serving both of those goals that we had.
Okay.
At least that's my summary of, of it, and I, I don't know if you want to share.
I was a little surprised, and I meant to ask you a bit beforehand, just to see it on here, now, because Dawn and I met last week.
Okay.
We're looking at some other schools' codes of conduct, just because we might do some more.
We could table it.
We're not, like, working at a discipline policies, but if we could table it for a little bit.
Sure, okay.
Because we had some ideas, and especially since she's not here.
Yeah. So, so Colleen, for five fifty, then.
Yeah, I was going to just make one comment while you're looking at it. The one that we've got in place right now, it said, it's the philosophy of Maynard Public Schools and child's behaviors, and the joint responsibility of home and the school, however, there's no mention of the home in the actual piece itself. And I would like, like I said, you know, if we could add something to say that, you know, these are the principles of student conduct, you know, to be encouraged by parents and guardians, to be supported, you know, similarly to the schools, just to tie the two of them together, because the sentence is there, but then the guts of it doesn't pertain to home support at all.
Yeah, how did you phrase that?
Oh, do you have my writing? And urge, yeah, following principles of student conduct, and urge parents, guardians to support the same as they relate to the students, something like that, just so that when you're looking, it would just be nice to tie together. And also responsibility of the home, can't do it all, just can't do it all.
So hearing, hearing the feedback, but also hearing Mary's recommendation, Colleen, can we just note in the minutes that we're going to bring it back for a first reading again next time, once the policy, the policy subcommittee has had a little bit of time to work on it further?
I'm sorry, we've been delayed.
Yeah.
No, no, no apology necessary, I want it to be thoughtful.
Yeah.
So it's quasi-tabled.
So this is going to be code of conduct policy, and then also the separate discipline policy.
That we're about to look at next.
Which again, if we'd like to table that, Mary, because.
Yes, well, I thought, well.
We could just table it, why don't we just table it?
It might be a good chance to get some input from other boards up here before we do.
Because this was the mask model, basically, and then.
Personally, I'd like a little more time to chew on it, especially in light of what you just shared, Mary B, and really looking for the connection between the two.
The two of them.
Because what she suggested is really, it's, it's pretty significant.
Yes.
Well, on this one, what I found was, there was a lot of input from the principals, but there wasn't reference to teachers' input. Maybe I missed it, but I read it a couple of times.
Well, I think it, by law, it's the School Improvement Council, which includes teachers, parents, students, and principals. And the nice thing about that, though, is it does say this, the building principals and the School Improvement Councils will bring the handbooks to you that will have a lot of the more detailed information. So that was the piece of that that I think we liked in there, when we were looking at it.
We, we were looking, I will say, Dawn, I looked at one, one district that had, for their discipline policy, they had different categories of behaviors, and so they said, you know, if you have an infraction in category A, here are what the, the consequences can look like, and then here, you know, here's category B, and I feel like based on parental input at the Molea Forum, that people wanted clear, like, here's, here's what can happen. So I think we would like to spend more time on that.
If that's the case, in terms of some of those things, just be aware that two of our schools are involved in very comprehensive PBIS initiatives, or one of the things that they do in that is they identify what they call major minor infractions, and they have very explicit consequences for immediate and obvious expectations. So if that is the way that they're just going to do it and try and policy, I'd ask that we certainly have conversation with the folks leading that part. You know, that they're going to be ready to do that in the next one or two, so certainly we do hold over the point of it. But that is, that is a core component of our PBIS teams are really working hard at. They've done incredible amount of work at home, so I would just like to respect those.
And that actually came up at our, well, it also came up at the roundtable meeting, Mary attended, Mary Brandley, there's two Marys, as well, and that, that's a union administrative collaborative operation, so we talked about that as well. So a lot of people are thinking the same things, we just got to make sure we put it down correctly. So I think we should just table these until we're ready.
Also, just to add, part of what we talked about too, when we met, you know, with you and the subcommittee, is once we have the code of conduct set, is maybe saying, I mean, discipline looks different in our different buildings, and so you want it in the policy broad enough that it can encompass, you know, encompass all of them, but then there's handing it back over to each building principal and saying, okay, we want us to still go with your individual building.
So there's a lot of work to be done. So why don't we just table these for now?
And just one takeaway from you, Mary, when you and Dawn look at it, because we're making such a big push for PBIS, one of the things that I would like to see is some carryover from the language of PBIS to be reflected in the policy, just for continuity purposes, so that everybody is encouraged as much as possible to use common language.
Just one other thing I would just mention, which you guys, we'll get the next reading of it, but even in the code of conduct, the conduct it just mentions healthy teacher-student relationships. But I feel like it's relationships, all the relationships in the building, not just the teacher-student relationship. So I don't know if that's come up in any of the scene, but.
All right, Mary and Mary, you have the floor. Give us a FY nineteen budget update, please.
Actually, do you mind if I do a little introduction?
Go right ahead, Dr. Park.
You know, I never miss a chance to speak.
I'm going to sit back here.
Well, I just wanted to notify the school committee, we've been kind of holding off on the, the budget discussions to some degree, because we've been working with the town, we've been attending a lot of meetings, a lot of collaborative meetings. Right, as of right now, we're still short from a level service budget, so the conversation will be coming about of what we might have to reduce. The MLT has met, and I'll be sharing that with the budget subcommittee, the list of things that, you know, we always start that process, we ask the MLT, well, what do you think are your priorities? And that's how we start the process. So I'll be getting that to the budget subcommittee probably by the middle of next week, I just wanted to share that with you. But we really don't know where we're going yet, you know, we've really tried hard to, to figure out where we're going to be, and we still don't know until the final number's the final number. I'd also like to congratulate Michelle on her budgeting practices. Last year was Michelle's first year budgeting for the schools, and she returned a surplus to the town last year that was only $4,000, which, you know, was extremely tight budgeting as a result of a less than level service budget over the multiple years. Now during prior years, the previous school department finance director was able to turn limited funds over because of savings that occurred during the school year. However, based on this very tight budget constraints of the past few years, it's become extremely difficult to have any excess at the end of the fiscal year, so I just want to congratulate Michelle for the hard work that she does, and the fact that, you know, she makes every penny count. So, thank you, Michelle.
That's like three one thousandths of a percent on a seventeen million dollar budget. Holy Toledo.
Sorry.
Geez.
Maybe she hears about this.
Sorry, I like numbers, I had to crunch that really quickly.
So we did go before the selectmen, last week, I guess it was? Don't laugh, we really haven't been going before the selectmen, and each time they ask us why we're back. So we are really trying hard to squeeze that gap. The last time we went with the hope that, we had heard from the Finance Committee that the healthcare premium increase was less than the ten percent that they projected, and we were, so we were there to ask if it did come in lower, if we could, you know, we could benefit a sixty forty split. So they hurt us again, there was some pretty heated conversation, everyone's passionate, so we're hopeful that, at least they hurt us, and so we're hopeful that, you know, I guess there's a differential of three point six percent supposedly, and so it's a case of how that, how it gets distributed. And to Bob's point, it, it's not final yet, so they're still, you know, that's why they're, they don't want to say anything yet, because they're still crunching the numbers. So we are hopeful. That's, that's probably it, that is the update.
Well, thank you. I know that both of you are pouring a lot of time into it, that's greatly appreciated, and I'll sort of echo the sentence, that wasn't the most pleasant meeting that I've sat in in a while. But our job is to be there and advocate for the students, and for the people that work in our buildings, so we did, because that's what we've been asked to do. So we'll continue doing it. All right, members' comments and questions? Mary B, I'm going to start with you, because I'm sure you've got a list.
Because I always have the longest list. I just want to echo what Justin said about Little Mermaid, I was fortunate to go, and not only, I mean, the cast was incredible, every time I go to one of these places, I say they can't get any better, and every time, they just blow me away, but also the background, you know, I mean, you get, Max was here, Max Ludwig, and he is the best marketer you have ever run into. He, he almost single-handedly, you know, got the advertising money to put together the program. The, you know, the people behind the scenes that were changing the, you know, the scenes and that. I mean, it was just, the entire community was, it was another.
Hundred and seventy something costumes?
Yes, yes.
Well, there is mentioned that in terms of technical protection, that this was the most technical, and there were layers of stage lighting and sound directions back up, incredibly, incredibly.
And even just the costume changes and the technology integration, like, you know, I'm thinking of the, the LED lighting that ran down certain costumes with battery packs, and just, it was impressive.
It was pretty impressive, and the musicians, too, were, not to be outdone at the time, so that's number one. Number two, Jeanne Bell had asked me to do a shout out for, it ties into Leading the Nation, the senior project presentations, which are May eleventh, it's Friday, we're going to have, I guess there's going to be lunch, thanks to the Maynard Education Foundation, another shout out. And then anyone that wants to go and sit on a panel to see these students do their presentations, I've had the opportunity to do it the last two years, and it's so much fun. I mean, again, take, you know, take the half day, because it is so worth it. I think a hundred percent of the students are doing them this year, so they need more adults to, to be able to sit in panel, and it's, it's a regular community at large person, whether it's a business person, organization, and that, and then one of the teachers that sit on each panel, and I think each time I've done three, they have, you know, three of the students come, and, and then you just, you know, critique them, nobody says anything mean, because they, they do such a great job, there's nothing, you know, they, they're just amazing, the work that goes into those senior projects. So, so anyone that wants to participate, just email Jeanne Bell, and she'd be, or Paula was, either one of them. Then I did see that the, there were people from the high school that went down to speak to the eighth grade, which was wonderful, talked about how great it is at the high school, and what they look forward to and that, which I really appreciate. I think we also talked about hopefully having a parent night.
Is it a way for children to work this parent night, where the videos are working with, as a way to, as a way to work?
Well, I can add, actually, that, because we had a meeting, and in addition to the traditional barbecue that we have for the eighth grade parents coming up, we've already set a date, and it's on the Leading the Nation website for another evening for, for the middle school parents to come up to the high school, but maybe a little further into the fall. I forget, we picked a date, though. So we've started to pick some more of these dates for these transition activities, so that our students in the middle school understand how lucky they are to have a high school that they're going to be going up to.
Any procedures, can we just create some programs?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we are doing that.
Yes.
There's three events coming up, and I think they're on that, I've been trying to get that updated as much as I can, so that people will know when these dates are.
Yeah, I'm still in this year, I just want to have all of our eighth graders go up to the ninth grade.
There is another thing in spring.
Would be fantastic. Oh, and then my, my last thing was, the MCAS coming up, have notes gone out or letters gone out to parents to tell them how important it is for their students to participate in the MCAS, and then I know we had talked about it earlier, but just to.
I believe that we have messaging that goes out in the national newsletters prior to MCAS at each building, to, to the same, we've had a shortage that would be put together in the last two weeks.
And I will say that last night, was it last night? I forget which night, it was the international dinner, I met a parent who said they didn't want to, their student would be embarrassed if they, the teacher knew, but it was a real shout out to one of our amazing teachers, Doug Luther, that the, the teaching that he's done, she felt very confident in the, in the writing prompt, because he had already prepared them so well. So they, what I'm hearing from the students are, they're feeling really good about it, so that's nice to hear.
Excellent.
Yeah.
But we'll be putting together a schedule and that kind of thing, so that the parents are aware of how important, so that we don't have another episode like last year.
We keep trying.
Yeah.
Well, and I do, like, the episode of last year was a very specific situation, a specific choice that then individuals make. We will continue to obviously encourage folks to take, to, to take a test, because it gives us the data. I don't know that there's anything in that specific instance that we could say there's ever change.
That particular instance.
Right, right.
But the big, the, the point you're trying to make is, it is a graduation requirement, so if your child has taken a tenth grade to graduate, they probably should take it at earlier grades, because it prepares them for that tenth grade high stakes test.
Exactly.
So it's a really important message, because ultimately, our students, in order to graduate, have to take this high stakes test, we might as well prepare them for it, because we're all about education, right, Mary?
That's a good way to word it. Exactly.
Yeah, we're on the same wavelength.
Thank you.
That's it. All right. I don't have as many things to share.
Well, it's been a few weeks since we got together.
You do so many things, no wonder you have a longer list.
I know, tomorrow at Green Meadow is Kindness Day, which I think is very cool, and I wanted to just send a shout out to the teachers and everyone who's helping make that happen, and also to Ann Stackwoods of the FTO, who sold some T-shirts that say, choose kind, and so kids could purchase them to wear tomorrow.
And the dogs.
And the dogs, yes.
Yeah.
I got one to do together. Our whole family. It's like, it's like, my, my. Also, just that Principal Shay's been sending out just good communication with, you know, all the events that are coming up, so I know because of the snow, they had to move some of the musical events, so a shout out to Ms. Wazakowski at Green Meadow, the music teacher, because she has three concerts coming up for grades one, two, and three on different dates. Also, anybody interested, the, the family open house next week at Green Meadow, I think it's Wednesday night, November eleventh, from six thirty to eight, and there'll be a art show. So I just know our teachers are working hard and making all those events happen, so I'm thinking that.
They actually also have a fundraiser, which, happy, the audience already knows. I'm excited about it, because we, we actually frame our kids' art in our house to be able to bring it, and just bring it home, bring it.
That's great.
Yeah. Jazz Cafe.
Tomorrow night.
I mean, there's just everything after thing, and they're all really cool, and I just want my question about all of them. And then I did want to find out when the Leading the Nation website is launching, is it?
So right now, it's been in a soft launch.
Yeah.
But the May seventh to eleventh is when we're gonna be, I'm gonna be even going to, believe it or not, athletic, like our softball games, handing out flyers to the, the parents watching the softball and the baseball game, saying, go to this website, Leading the Nation, we're gonna be having a lot of celebration and events, so we're, we're celebrating at every possible event we could. I know MBF is gonna have a celebration of their grants, we're going to have the Senior Project, which is the culminating event, I am going to invite the state, I'm hoping they're gonna come. And so that's the week where it's gonna be full court press, that people see this, and they're still working on some pretty special videos that, you know, Mary, Mary Marsh recommended, so we're working on, on that to be the, the big week, but in the meantime, it's out there, some people are seeing it, we can actually check on who's clicking on it, believe it or not. So, most of the people are the people who are contributing, because I've had a lot of the teachers and people who are doing all these wonderful programs write them up.
I'm just, I just think it'd be great, for people, anyone that I know, I guess things have come up, I've just kind of been getting excited and telling people about the whole thing, and even like, oh, did you see Little Mermaid? Like, one person asked the others, oh, they were so good, oh, they were so good, it's just, and just talking, trying to talk about things.
Well, maybe we can get it up.
And like, even like the thing that came tonight about all the videos, they were so, so good.
I kind of hate it when those kids were, were talking, just, it was like, I should just take.
I know, they, they have the video camera there, thanks to you.
Yeah, right, I was doing the same thing.
It was a good film.
Yeah, right.
These planets, we sound good.
Some of them are the ones who are doing it, by the way, so.
So, yeah, so if there's a way to be able to, to share the soft with just people that might be interested, I thought that would be nice.
Well, maybe we just put it on the blog and get it started.
If you feel like you're ready for that pressure.
Why not? Well, it's a constant, we're, we're gonna constantly improve it, it's not like it's gonna end after that either.
Yeah, okay.
We're just gonna keep at, because what I like about it, to Mary, Mary Bradley's point is, I want us to have these events, and to your point, into next year, so people know what's coming up, and all these wonderful things that are annual things, now that we've passed the calendar, we can actually prepare, so people are prepared a year in advance. That's my hope, to make this a living website.
People wanting to move into town.
Yeah.
Because even like the international dinner, I was talking to a woman, like, I didn't even know about that, it went last year, oh, they were upset, I was gonna go, you know.
Well, I do have another little surprise. We're working on, um, the development of a website and an app, so that we will have a synced calendar, so all these things will be pushed out to every parent's phone. So we're at, that was part of the communication we were trying to develop, and we're in the pro, we're in the final process, the technology director and I have been looking at multiple vendors, and we believe that we're gonna have such increased communication starting in the new fiscal year, because we were able to, you know, by the way, I've had some complaints about my garbled snow days, and we're hoping that this new, this, we're gonna get rid of that, to help us afford this new website, this new app, that will help us get the information out better and hopefully clearer. So, so there's, you're gonna see a lot of changes in communication, and I'm very excited about that.
Cool. And I just want to mention, too, as far as that Bobby graciously offered, that anyone that do want to talk, that was at a decision point for what they want to do, their family, transitions for them, that he was willing to.
I've had people email, just to let you know.
Yes, yeah, so.
So we're setting up times.
It's a really great way to be able to just have this conversation with people that and have them feel like they're able to make the best possible decisions. Yeah.
Okay, let me finish my thought, Jen, I'm emailing you something. I, through my job in Lexington, I took a PD class the last few weeks, it's through Shrewsbury Health and Family Services, or Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, a woman by the name of Christine Mallory came in and facilitated a class called Youth Mental Health First Aid. It's, it's a grant-funded program, and what the, the idea behind it is, is teaching community members, teachers, firefighters, first responders, parents and guardians, what the warning signs of emerging mental health issues look like in adolescents, and give them very specific skills and interventions to use on a short-term basis, to stabilize the individual long enough to get them more specialized care. It comes with a, it's a eight-hour-plus course, it has a culminating exam, you get a certificate, you're certified for three years in the Youth Mental Health First Aid, but I'm emailing you about that now, Jen, because I think it could be a wonderful opportunity for PD, for our, our staff and our administrators, and also just something else that we do in our district to really help our, our youth, just because we're seeing such exaggerated and, you know, scary increases in mental health issues, especially stress, anxiety, depression. So I'm gonna, I'm emailing you the link right now, I don't know, I don't think there's caustic associated with it, which automatically makes it so much cooler in my eyes. But yeah, so, if anyone else is interested, they do it in communities all throughout the area.
What I was gonna ask, yeah, if we do that, would it be possible?
So, I work, I'm working with the New York Police, and the other organizations in there, on a, so, and they, they, and they want to.
And I remember.
So the idea would be that we are providing wraparound services and supports around a variety of health issues, you know, physical, mental health, substance, substance use and so on, so I will refer this to that group, because that's one of the things that we're looking to do, is to provide Chinese, so absolutely, really helpful.
And then also, I just want to celebrate amazing things that are happening in our schools. I think it was last week, time's blending together, they go for books, my kids had an absolute blast at they go for books at Green Meadow, talk about energy, Mr. Minasian, you know, we can't say anything more about, about how amazing he is, but my kids just came home buzzing, like, he stacks the new books in English and Spanish, and just the community aspect and the theme of the night, I think it's, again, it's just something that I think in our schools.
That sells out every year.
Really, really, really cool.
Yeah.
They go for books, yep, it's on the calendar already for next year. So yeah, a lot of things that are happening, and I think that's pretty much all I've got. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All right.